I'd like to call this meeting to order. Our presentation of colors tonight's from Reynolds High School and these gentlemen, people are instructed by Lieutenant Colonel David Wise of the U.S. Army, retired. I ask that you rise. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask that you remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, you may be seated. I ask that we have a motion to approve the agenda with one change, and that's to move the advisory council item from the consent agenda to the action item. Do you have a motion?
To a move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Tonight, I want to take a moment to thank someone or a group of people that work with us and help us to do our television, or televising portion of our, of our meeting. And, you know, these people come in and they, they work, and they work very efficiently, but they work not to be noticed. And in that vein, I would like to ask for Robert Frisbee, Leslie Avril, Scott Emery, Chad Merrill, to come up here and stand so the board can recognize them for the work that they do. And also, Mr. Pace, who keeps us all in line. So, could I get you gentle, ladies and gentlemen, to come out and do that?
They're in the back room.
You see, you didn't even know where they were. We certainly appreciate all your efforts to make us look good, because it sure is hard. Thank you so much. At this time, we'll ask for the superintendent's comments.
Well-deserved recognition. You know, we're really off to a good start, if you can believe it is day, actually, this was day eight of the new school year. And since August 28th, I've had the opportunity to actually visit all 43 of our schools. I've had my head and feet into classrooms, and next year, I will be wearing tennis shoes, I promise you that. But I'm just so impressed of just how efficiently our teachers, our support staff, our administrators, and our students transition back. Sometimes, when you're standing out in the car line, you think, oh, it's organized chaos. I see Denise Montgomery's trying to work through some leftover construction and doing it just, and so efficiently.
Doesn't she look nice with a hard hat?
She, she does, and with the orange vest on, and, but, you guys just, administration, teachers, staff, and a lot of, a lot of praise for our students, it's just remarkable. And you may think there's organized chaos outside with cars and, and everything happening outside of the building, but once that first bell rings, it is just absolutely amazing how quickly we transition back, and we're in that very quality learning environment. And I also want to note, I've been at this quite a while, and I don't think, I've been associated with Monmouth County Schools all my life, I don't know if I've ever stepped as in the, and I'm talking about the entire district, that I've stepped in school buildings and stepped on, on campuses that have been just as clean and well-maintained as, as I've seen them this year. I think it's the, the best in terms of, of how we look, and I think that's important, because when I'm talking with staff inside the building and students, everybody has a smile, and I just believe that there's a, clearly a correlation. And, I don't know if he's here tonight, but, but he is, Clark Wyatt, Director of our Maintenance Department. And Clark had this brainstorm that what he was going to do over the summer, we've never done before, and that is, he was going to take all the Maintenance Department, every staff member, and he was going to devote it to one particular school until the job got done, until it was, was completely cleaned and maintained, and he had helped the staff as much as possible, then move on to the next school district. And Clark, I, I think that has certainly had a significant fact, it's a significant factor in, in how well everything looks, along with just the, the work of our custodians, our school-based custodians and staff, and even our principals. I was bragging on, on Mr. Bailey to, to staff last week, we had a new teacher that happened to walk up, up on him and hadn't met him yet, a brand-new principal, and wondered, who was this guy in a, in an outfit, in overalls with a weed eater in his hand and, and working on the grounds? It was his principal. And so, you lead by example, and I can tell you that it's incredible how, how good that campus looks, Greg, so thank all of you for that. And also, the community partnerships. We have particular local, local churches that have organized, and they're in our schools prior to the start, and they're working on those grounds, and they bring a number of volunteers, so thanks to all of them. And you've done a great job of establishing those, those connections, and how fortunate we are here in Monmouth County. I want to also officially welcome 232 new employees to Monmouth County Schools and to our family, and 130 of those are actually new classroom teachers and certified support staff. And I want to thank Mrs. Lopez, I know she's, she's here, and her staff, and used to be personnel, it's now human resources, moved into the 21st century. And they have really put an incredible amount of time and effort in working over the summer. They're, they're here on days where, where other staff are, are taking the weekend and making sure that the hiring process is, is done efficiently, effectively, and, and correctly. And so, thanks to them, because they, they have a, they have really, really put a lot of effort into this. The orientation session that our board attended, I think you would agree that, once again, it was just an outstanding, organized event, and provided just a lot of information, and what a great way to, again, welcome, welcome our new employees to our family. Our school performance results from the previous 2016-17 school year, they were officially released by the State Board of Ed earlier this afternoon. And School Board, Mr. Earwood, as we have done in the past, will be providing you a very comprehensive presentation of all of that data at the next board session. We're still trying to look through the, the state results and doing comparison, comparing ourselves to systems across the state that are our size, as well as looking at, at our, our fellow local systems. And I'm pleased to announce, we, it was a mixed bag this year, and I want to really recognize one of the, the big highlights, and that is our graduation rate. We rose in one year from the rate of 85.74 to 88.32, and that's a significant increase. That rate also exceeded the state's average, which was at 86.5. And congratulations to our graduation initiative team, I think Kay Lamb was here earlier with us, and, and that team just does some incredible things. They, they continue to search and recover, and they do it well. And we, we were talking earlier about community partners. We have some incredible partnerships that are helping us in terms of improving those graduation rates, whether it be Evelyn Charities, United Way, that has done, just had a significant effort in our middle schools, YMCA, Children's First, those are just a few of the, again, the community organizations that are working side-by-side with us to help our students. And I also want to send out some kudos to Owen High School and Community High School. I think Mrs. Turner is here, and I think Ms. Greenhoe, both of those principals are with us tonight. Congratulations to them. They raised their graduation rates over the previous year by eight percentage points each, and that's the highest increases among all of our 43 schools. And again, definitely some highlights regarding individual school growth. I know Mr. Burtzfield is here, and Valley Springs Middle School has exceeded, exceeded their growth target for the fifth consecutive year in a row, in a row. And I think last year, they had the highest growth of any middle school in the entire state of North Carolina. That is just absolutely phenomenal, Mr. Burtzfield, so, absolutely. And we also want to recognize Emma Elementary. Let's see if Mr. Stowe is here with us, and Jeremy, I got to apologize to your staff because I walked out, I was so pleased when I saw these results, I gave them a little preliminary, I was very careful how I said it. I know you'd back me up with that, Mr. Stowe, right, we're not releasing information early. But I praised them for the third year in a row, and I was, I was very much mistaken, it's actually the fourth year in a row, so they are right on Valley Springs heels, but what an accomplishment at Emma Elementary, so congratulations to you and your staff as well. Wise is here, so congratulations, North Windy Ridge Intermediate, they achieved the highest growth index across the entire district of all of our schools. And also to Irwin High School, because they had the highest growth of all of our middle and high schools. And I think this is also the, the first, the first year that Irwin High School has achieved a B performance grade, that's outstanding, Greg. A lot to, to praise the staff on to, to start this school year. And overall, composite school grades, again, we had some mixed grades, our As, once again, Early College and Discovery, and I've got to go back, and especially for Early College, how many years in a row that has been, that they've, they've led that performance for the system. We had 17 Bs, 18 Cs, we also had five Ds, and so, we've got some areas we need to work on. Last year, we, we were all As, Bs, and Cs, so, again, it's for a system our size, it's good to have some, some growth targets. So, Ms. Swanger, we're working, we're going to be working hard with, with our, with our schools to maintain and to increase. I also want to say, eight of our nine graded high schools received a B or higher, I think that's outstanding, and Harmony Valley Elementary School, I don't know if, yeah, Mrs. Walker is here. She inherited that performance, and Ms. Jackson's here, who left that performance, but you had the highest performance and growth composite of across the entire district, so congratulations. What a great thing to be able to share to your, to your staff. In closing, I want to mention regarding our technology initiative that's taking place, Phase Three of our student one-to-one implementation of devices, that is well on its way. Mr. Pace has been guiding that, that initiative, and so, for 10th, 11th, and 12th graders out in the high schools, those laptops are being distributed. And I, I had the honor of being at North Monmouth High School when that was happening in the classroom, I happened to be in, too, Mr. Pace, and just a lot of excitement going on there. And also, elementary, for elementary schools, this year, all of our elementaries will have STEM labs, and we're really, and I say STEM, I apologize, it is a STEAM lab, because we add an arts component at our elementary level, and so, each of our elementary schools will be, will have that particular resource, and we've been doing a lot of training with staff to make sure that, that that's the highest quality possible. So, a lot of good things happening to start this school year, and that's the way I want to end my comments.
Madam Chair, could I have a moment of privilege? I want to add something to what Dr. Bowen had to say earlier. On the Saturday, prior to, little over a week before the start of school, Biltmore Church, here in, in Asheville, they have a campus in Swananoa, one in West Asheville, one in Arden, one in Hendersonville, and one down in Franklin, but collectively, they had a love loud, and Biltmore Church worked on 21 of our campuses, we have 42. 21 of our campuses spreading mulch, weed eating, trimming trees, discovering a hornet's nest that was about this big at West Monmouth Elementary. There were a lot of things that went on, and I was, I was honored and proud to be able to be a part of that at both West Monmouth Elementary and at Irwin High School. The great thing I saw at Irwin High School was, what they, what they did from the West Asheville campus was, most of the people that were working at Irwin High School were Irwin High School students. So, they took the, the youth in the church, said, we want to help, and I would say there were 20 to 25 folks over there, and 18, 19 of them were high school students who were painting the railing, they were, they were spreading mulch, they were, they were pulling out old shrubs, and really making the campuses, I agree, the ones that I've been able to see, Dr. Bowen, look as good as they've looked in a long time. So, I would just like, on behalf of the board, to publicly thank the folks at Biltmore Church, and they have partnered with us over the last four or five years on a lot of things, both at, as a system and at individual schools. And it's, it's just, it's good to have those partnerships, and I, I think sometimes we need to just publicly say thank you. But 21 schools on a Saturday from 8:00 to 12:00. And then, I also want to give kudos to Mr. Bailey and one of his assistant principals at Irwin High School, because on the Saturday before school started, at about 7:45 in the morning, I live near the high school, and I'm walking my dog, and there are two folks on campus who are working, weed eating, blowing trash off, et cetera, and that's who it was on the Saturday before school's going to start on Monday. So, all of this, just a little bit of pitching in and helping from a lot of different places really makes a difference. And, and who it impacts is those kids. I think there's a reason why you see those smiles and, and the things you've seen at some of the schools, Dr. Bowen, and, and it's not just what goes on in the classroom, but that, those schools are communities within our communities, and they are used by so many different folks, and I think anything we can do, and any partnerships we can have with, in this case, Biltmore Church, to, to beautify those campuses and, and help them look as good as, as we can, is, is positive, and kudos to the folks from Biltmore Church for, for helping us on that Saturday.
I understand there's some other churches that have been involved in, in doing that too, but I also want to acknowledge that Mr. Bailey knows how to drive a tractor, and isn't that interesting? Thank you. Any other comments from the board? At this time, it's time for public comment, and if there's anyone in here that wants to make public comment, I ask that you, if you have not signed up, that you come sign up now. Do we have public comment?
Are we not doing the curriculum feature?
Oh, I just finished curriculum, did you notice? I'm sorry, Ms. Swanger. I apologize. If you want to make public comment, if you'll take this opportunity to come sign up with Mr. Rick, that is a good thing, and now we'll follow the agenda as it's printed, and Ms. Swanger will go into the curriculum feature.
We are always flexible, Madam Chair.
Yes, we are.
As we had a gathering earlier this evening, we introduced our rock stars to you as a group. It's wonderful to have our star educators with us this evening and their administrators. Thank you all for being here, it's fabulous to see you out in the audience, but now we get to see who you are individually and recognize you in your districts. So, we will be calling names this evening, if Dr. Bowen and Madam Chair will join us in the middle, and then we will also ask the board member from each district to join us to celebrate the Teachers of the Year in your school district. We are starting with the new district this year. Our Teacher of the Year Committee came to us and asked, could we look at a different way that we group some of our district schools, such as Nesbit Community High School, our more specialized schools? So, we have a district at large, so, Donna, you get your very own district this year. So, we will start with our at-large district, and recognizing the Teachers of the Year from Monmouth County Early College, Alan Nice Webb. From Nesbit Discovery Academy, Greg Tucker. And from the Progressive Education Program, Ashley Moore. We always have to get our strategy of where we stand. Congratulations to our at-large district winners. From the Reynolds District, Ms. Cindy McMahon. Representing A.C. Reynolds High School, Elizabeth Love. A.C. Reynolds Middle School, Melissa Justin. From Kane Creek Middle, Dr. Heather Alexander. From Charles C. Bell Elementary, Melissa Melberg. Mr. Greg Cheatham from Fairview Elementary. At Hall Creek Elementary, Sarah McGee. And Ashley Ritchie from Oakley Elementary. Congratulations to our Reynolds District winners. Ms. Buchanan, would you join us for the Owen District? Representing Owen, Charles D. Owen High School, Jackie Derschel. From Charles D. Owen Middle School, Ryan McCormick. From Black Mountain Elementary, Ann Bell. From Black Mountain Primary, Rachel Everett. Representing Deputy Williams Elementary, Beverly Caswara. Congratulations to our Owen District winners. Join us for the Irwin District. From Clade Irwin High School, Abigail Hesling. From Clade Irwin Middle School, Tanya Payne. From Joe P. Evelyn Intermediate School, Janet Andrusi. Representing Emma Elementary, Kirsten McDonald. At Johnston Elementary, we have Terry Downing. From Lester Elementary, Kristy Reason. From West Monmouth Elementary, Lindsay Swain. From Woodfin Elementary, Marcy Davenport Wells. Congratulations to our Irwin District Teachers of the Year. Would you come up for the Inca District? Representing Inca High School, Jennifer Wilson Crook. Inca Middle School winner, Emily Gephardt. From Inca Intermediate, Katherine Thomas. At Kenner Elementary, Anita Orr. From Harmony Valley Elementary, Elizabeth Cartengainer. At Pisgah Elementary, Stacy Pavlina. At Sand Hill Venable Elementary, Vicki Fender. Congratulations to our Inca Teacher of the Years. Representing North Monmouth District, North Monmouth High School, Richard DeLorey. Good job. At North Monmouth Middle School, Megan Batwell. From North Windy Ridge Intermediate School, Brandon Flankenstein. At Barnardsville Elementary, Anna Rice. From North Monmouth Elementary, Elizabeth Astapolos. From North Buncombe Elementary, Elizabeth Astapolos. We practiced her name before we came in here. I made apologies prior to this session. From Weaverville Elementary, Cindy Rup. From Weaverville Primary, Elizabeth Penley. Let's get a round of applause to our North Buncombe Teachers of the Year. Ms. Tarquille, please join us for the T.C. Robertson District. At T.C. Robertson High School, Megan Sanders. Representing Valley Springs Middle School, Angela Cannon. At Charles T. Coontz Intermediate School, Laura Josie. Avrich Creek Elementary School, Mr. Jesse Quigley. Representing Glen Arden Elementary, Stacy Burton. And from Estes Elementary, Jennifer Fied. Congratulations to our Robertson winners. Now, we get to find out who each district winner is. So, we don't have a drum roll? And so when I call your name, please come down and let us honor you. For the at-large district winner, from Discovery Academy, Greg Tucker. Teacher of the Year for the district, Elizabeth Love, Reynolds High School. Representing Owen District, Ryan McCormick, Owen Middle School. Irwin District, Ms. Terry Downing, Johnston Elementary. Representing the Inca District, Ms. Vicki Fender at Sand Hill Venable. From North Buncombe, Cynthia Rup, Weaverville Elementary. And representing the Robertson District this year, Mr. Jesse Quigley, Avrich Creek Elementary. Ladies and gentlemen, these are the district winners, and we will find out who the Buncombe County Teacher of the Year is at the end of the month at our annual banquet. Congratulations to all of you and to all of you. Ben, would you like them to step out for a photo op? Is that correct? We're all set, okay. All right. Do you have any further instructions?
Nicely organized.
Want to bust up a party, just call them up.
I thought you were trying to get someone to teach you.
No, I was looking for somebody, sorry. I guess now, all the workhorses are still here and the show horses have gone home. So, it is now time for public comment, and I believe we have one signed up?
Yes, ma'am, we have Tina White of Asheville for public comment.
Mr. Emery? No, I see it. It's down there.
Does it go from here or do you run it?
He takes care of it.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, thank you. Tina White, Executive Director of Blue Ridge Pride Center. I understand that you are developing training to better understand and support transgender students, and I really want to thank you for that. I'd like to offer a rarely shared perspective of the future you are enabling. When I transitioned four years ago, gender was the least important change in my life. For the first time ever, I felt connected to myself, to my family, and to my God. I had spent 50 years living in shame, trying to fix myself. I had consulted ministers, I had pored through the Bible. Mostly, I prayed, "Please, God, fix me." God never answered. It was only when my thoughts turned to self-destruction that everything changed. Because no matter how disgusting the world might find me, even if I lost my wife, my children, my family, my career, my friends, my human rights, I felt pretty certain that my first duty was to stay alive. It begs the question, why do people like me feel that we must transform ourselves or die? We are driven to such desperate measures because we otherwise travel life feeling utterly alone, unseen, and untouched by anyone. To be fair, how can people love or touch someone that we never reveal? When my mother shared her cooing "I love yous," it tortured me. She couldn't love me, she didn't know who I was. When you closet your soul, you wall it off from humanity. Living a lifetime in solitary confinement is a profoundly dehumanizing experience. It will destroy anyone. To express and share our identity is not just a human right, it is a human necessity. So after 50 years, I finally understood that victory lay not in trying to conquer my gender, but in learning to understand and accept it. And after 50 years, God finally answered me. See, I had beseeched Him to fix me, never getting a response. It was only after transitioning that I realized it wasn't God who wasn't there, it was me. I had been so ashamed of His creation that I had failed to bring myself to the table. You can't have a conversation with someone if you're not both there in the room. And to live a life without a connection to God is very lonely. In 1 Samuel, God declares, "The Lord seeth not as man seeth; for man looketh on the outward appearance, but the Lord looketh on the..."
Thank you. That's it?
That is all.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the action agenda. First item is 2016-17 Budget Amendment Number 10. Do members of the board have questions for Ms. Frisbee? She better be in this room. There she is, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Frisbee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Don't move, Madam Chair.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is Community High School. We approve the CMAR Contract Amendment Number Two, Mr. Fairley. Any questions for Mr. Fairley from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Mr. Fairley, will you come on down? Thank you. Mr. Queen?
Mr. Fairley, when I read this amendment to the contract, I'd been concerned or wondering how the progress of the work was going on. I know at one point, there had to be a redesign architecturally because of some conditions that were found out. And I guess in my mind, I thought that at that time, when we made the approval for those changes to be made, that we were paying for that at that time. And now, I understand that this has caused an extension of four months into the project. I guess, is that a couple of questions? Is the four months, is that something that we know to be true? Or is that something that could vary? It could be done quicker, shorter period of time? Is there another chance to go beyond the four months to maybe five, six months or longer? Could you just sort of give us an update on all of that, please?
All those possibilities...
Exist.
They really do. I think it's the contractors, Michael, and our design team to get it done as soon as possible. But the real consequences is the winter weather. In the mountains of North Carolina, if you don't get closed in when winter weather hits, you're going to be delayed. And because we've really pushed this, we had hoped to start in the beginning of the summer, as soon as school let out, and we've only been able to do some minor site work that Amendment Number One authorized. So, we're behind the eight ball already. It's my hope that we get done sooner. But in all likelihood, I think a January 1st, 2020 completion date is realistic.
January 21st, 20...
January 1, 2020, for the entire completion of the project. There's multi-phases within that project, but... So we had hoped to be done before the start of school in 2019. That's not going to happen.
The changes here that are requested in this document of $101,816 reflect the four-month extension of project duration. Now, is that for work that's already done or work that is anticipated to be done? Is this for the work that's already been taking place with the redesign and everything?
That's what caused this extension to take place. This four-month extension is the redesign, rebidding, value engineering, and such.
So this is for the value engineering that already occurred? Or has increased the cost of that value engineering of the original contract?
Our contractual completion date was four months earlier. Now, our contractual completion date is four months later than what it was. So, we are incentivizing the contractor to finish early, but it's the same project. He's entitled to four more months to finish it. If he can finish it early, that is fabulous. It will benefit everyone.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Fairley? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I will make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass this. The consent agenda is our next item.
We have one more.
Oh, that is true. Thank you very much. We need to... Well, tonight's my night, isn't it? Okay. So another community high school item is to accept the GMP and authorize the CMAR to proceed. Tim Fairley is already at the podium. Members of the board have questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, looking at the document with the listing of the additions and renovations and so forth and all the individual bids, I had a couple of questions of things that I just didn't understand. Alternate number one, I'm going to come back to because that's the most confusing part to me. But on, there are ones that say page one of two and then page two of two down at the bottom. So I'm looking at page two of two. I just went through to sort of try to understand what all the numbers were, and mostly I understand them. But could you explain what the bond adjustment is of $7,250?
The CMAR, Construction Manager at Risk, or General Contractor basically that's been working with us, Hickory Construction, provides a payment and performance bond to us to, as an insurance policy. The project, in order to establish the contract, we established what we thought was a good contract amount for this scope of work. We all agreed on it. We had professional estimators agree on a scope of work. We had kind of a schematic design from the architect before we negotiated this. Unfortunately, with this market, it has bid higher than what we had hoped. Unfortunately, with this market, it has bid higher than what we had hoped. And if you look on page one of one, you will see the bond near the bottom, the second last item, the bond that was based on that original contract amount. It's basically an insurance policy that is dollar-driven by the value of the project. Well, because the contract amount is higher than that, this is the differential to add on to that bond to fully insure us, basically.
Okay. And the Deduct Early Site Package Amendment One, that was what we passed earlier?
That was Amendment Number One, and we've treated that like a separate little package of work. Even though it was bid, and you'll see the numbers in the C-MAR number, it was bid previously, and we were able to get a little bit of work done. And so we're taking the amount that you authorized off of the overall GMP. So we kind of have that number, that's a credit for that site work, plus this is the total construction cost. But the GMP, which is the amount for this next phase, is the number you see there.
Okay. All right. So then, getting to alternate number one, which is the greenhouse and CTE and ADA, I saw different numbers for alternate number one. So on the same page two of two, the total for alternate number one is $292,494. But then, when I go forward to the individual alternates that were accepted or not accepted, then I see it listed at 311,662. So was that value engineered? Is that how it came in lower? Why is it...
It wasn't value engineered. We have a separate School Capital Fund Commission line item for the greenhouse that's driven by the ADA study that was done. We've done all the other greenhouses. We've done all the other food labs. We're in process of doing the food labs, I should say, that's ADA-driven. And what we did was, in the original bidding, we put the greenhouse as an alternate one so we could isolate that cost as an accounting method. We're going to do the work at the same time. The construction manager is going to manage it, but we need to apply that cost to that separate funding line item. Well, what we realized is, we just put the greenhouse and the foundation in there. There's a lot more to the greenhouse and to the ADA items than, that should really be in that other fund. So the parking lot related to the greenhouse, the drive sidewalks, the power and utilities related to that. And so this is kind of an accounting, while it was bid with the rest of the project, we've pulled out that amount of work that was greenhouse, food lab-related, that should be applied to this other School Capital Fund Commission budget.
So that's the items that are diverted to other funding sources, which adds up to 629,720.
Well...
Right? Those are the things that you're talking about there that got diverted?
Let me make sure I get this right, because it is complicated.
Yes.
That item, deferred items is...
So items diverted to other funding sources, which is...
Let me find that. Okay, on the next page there, yeah.
Something? I'm on the wrong one, but...
Yes. We've kind of, you see how they've moved to alternate number one? So alternate number one is that other School Capital Fund account. So we bid it, so we have a greenhouse, we have a foundation. We've got a few things in alternate number one, and these are the rest of the items bid with the rest of the project that really should be applied to that other funding source.
Okay. So I think I understand that now. Still, what I don't understand is the difference between the 292,494, which is what is in this listing, but then the 311,662, which is the amount, and maybe I'm just picking nits here, but I want to make sure I understand what I'm voting on. So do you see in the list where they have the different alternate one, alternate two, accepted, not accepted, accepted, not accepted? And that comes out at 311,662 for alternate number one, as opposed to the 292,494? You see what I'm looking at there?
Yes, I do. And we have the modular relocation in there as well.
Uh-huh.
That is not in...
I see that in both, I think. The modular relocation is second in the list on this first list.
On that one, right?
Yeah. And then it's last on the list on the other one. Site work, is that the difference?
So this is an accounting of what we bid and the way we bid it originally. And then, it is a accounting on that page that's headed up, value engineering, of activities we did after we received bids. So we had it all lumped in there, and then it was over budget. So this is an accounting of looking at what the bids were and what we moved after the bids. So within the bid, you had some items in that alternate School Capital Fund Commission, but this next page that you're looking at with the 629 shows other items that we moved after the bid to account for all the ADA items.
Okay. So the right number then is the 292,494, not the 311,662? In terms of the GMP?
The two pages, page one of two and two of two, add up to the GMP. The other items are backup items that show you how we got there.
Okay.
So the page one of two and two of two is really a summary sheet, and then you've got to dig into the backup items.
Right. And it was, yes, it was in trying to...
So it is confusing.
Yeah. It was in trying to understand that 292 number that I got lost. But if you're telling me that's the right number, then I'll believe you and not try to track down where all the other dollars went. I'm going to leave it alone. Thank you. I understand enough.
I'm glad we went down the yellow brick road.
One more question, Madam Chair. And it goes back to the alternates and that first section, alternate one. The modular relocation, can you share, Tim, the intention of the modular? Is it being relocated onsite? Is it going to be reused? Is it moving somewhere else and being reset up? Eighty, almost $87,000 to move it?
That's correct. And...
Seems...
Well, you have to run power to it. Moving's the easy part. That's the cheap part.
Okay, so we're talking about the total setup, moving, power?
You have to do...
Plumbing, water?
The old one had wood, non-ADA compliant access to it. We have put ADA compliant access and a canopy over it, takes a new foundation. So that's what it costs to move a modular. You can buy a modular for less than that. The real cost of modular is in moving and setup.
How many square feet are we talking about?
It's like two classrooms.
So...
Clark, can you help me with that? What would be the square footage of those modulators approximately?
They're roughly 900 square feet.
So 1,800 square feet, roughly?
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Thank you. It just seems expensive.
It is expensive. Did you have a question, Mr. Bryant?
I did. Is Mr. Queen, or you?
You may have the floor.
On the page, Mr. Fairley, with alternate, where handwriting has been done with accepted, not accepted, as I look at alternate two, gymnasium renovations, not accepted. So we've got a whole list of things there that totaled $111,000. Help me to understand, do we have a gymnasium that's usable? Do we have a gymnasium that can be used for health and physical education classroom space? Are there some things being done that just I'm not seeing here or I've missed? Or is there nothing being done in that part of the facility?
Very minor work. We're sprinklering the building, so there's work in there to sprinkler it, and there's HVAC rooftop units. But that's the extent of it. What we had hoped to do was to actually shorten the basketball court a little bit so that we could put a weight room and a classroom in there. We're not going to be able to do that unless more money is found.
Well, and that's part two of my question. As we go back to what we've already voted on, there was some discussion in there that perhaps there might be some more money needed for that coming from a couple of sources, lottery or some other places. Is that something we need to look at with this facility and this particular item, either A, now, or B, at some point after tonight, to see if it makes sense, Dr. Baldwin, to... I got to believe, if $111,000 is the right number, we go back in there in two years, it's going to cost $211,000 to do this work.
You'd have to rework the sprinklers, lighting, HVAC to provide... Because you're creating new rooms in there.
I would think in this particular facility, with this particular dynamic of student, anything we can do that helps, from a movement perspective, from classroom, health education, all the different dynamics that are involved that bring a lot of these students there, we would be well-versed as a board if we can do it. If we can't do it, we can't do it. But I, because I thought I remembered from the plan, some changes. And so it was going to be a much more 21st century facility than what it is today for those students in that school. And so I just throw that out there. I don't know what I'm really asking, Madam Chair, other than, Dr. Baldwin, do you have some thoughts? Mr. Fairley, do you have some thoughts on it? Do we have the ability? What would be our course of action if the board wanted to do something?
You know, Mr. Fairley and I have had several discussions, and I guess the best way to sum them up is it all, you know, we asked some similar questions, not only relative to the gymnasium, but other areas that were reduced in scope. And it continued to come back to the timing of when to do that. I think we do have to realize that, a couple of things from my end. Number one, the loss of flexibility of the utilization of the capital commission funding that in the past, we have been able to tap into in a much more flexible manner. The source that then remains is our lottery funding. And that's, again, the discussion Mr. Fairley and I have had, and at what point in time do we look at the potential for accessing that. That aside, community high school aside, there's also in the back of my mind, until, and again, timing, until we get a better picture regarding the issue that's facing us with K3. I mean, we're just talking about the modular. I was sitting here just...
How many are we going to need?
Right. And very thankful that that wasn't the discussion we were immediately having about placing modulators to handle K3 with the facility issue. So I certainly respect and agree with what you're saying. I think it's a matter of timing, and maybe in this particular project, because of the tenuous nature of the environment and the needs of that capital funding, that we continue to get updates on where we are with that construction project. And then, the potential timing of when to access funds, because I think that Tim started the conversation with the question, "We don't know." And I think that's some of the problem right now in this particular construction environment. There's just so many unknowns because of the demands of subcontractors. That's one prime example. So it's, when do you pull the trigger in order to access additional funds that weren't a part of the original budget of the project?
And so do we have the flexibility if, let's say, in six months' time, the state reverses course or extends things out a couple of years on the classroom size or whatever, do we have the ability, because of the way the original plans were done, whether it be alternate two, gymnasium, or anything else in this project, to go back and revisit and add it in, since we are January 1, 2020 completion? Or are we done here?
We have, for this price, we have a very small window to add it back in. Because, like I said, the sprinklers, the lighting, all that stuff is going to happen. And...
And you hope that that's being worked on, we get enough done to get into the wintertime where you can not be backed up?
Yeah, that's the make or break, is we have two winters we'll be going through. And if our contractor can get us dried in in time, we'll see...
Not in his head, yes.
It's on public record, right? It's going to be a challenge, but if he does, we're going to be in really good shape time-wise. But that also speeds things up, and we're not going to have much of an opportunity to add this back in at this price. And you have to understand, too, this isn't the only price. There is C-MAR markup on it.
Right. Bonding, all of it.
Bond cost you saw, and designer fee markup that would... Now, it's not tremendous amount. But if you come back, like you said, and bid this, say, after the project is done, I guarantee you're going to pay a lot more, because you're going to have to rework things. You're going to have to redesign it, you're going to have to rebid, because you're going to have to rework stuff that's already in place. It's, you know, it's a tough decision. We had a big dollar amount to overcome, and this was one of the cleaner cuts we could make. I'm not saying it's a good one, and I'm, I'll do whatever you see. It wasn't absolutely necessary to make the school function, and that's how we made decisions. Is this absolutely necessary?
Tim, just revisit the modular question once again. That unit or units that are there, how old are they? What's the life expectancy?
I'm going to have to defer to Clark again. He is our modular expert and has really helped out on all these modular moves.
That floorboard, looking exactly at it, so we had 2000 or early 2000 model. Lifespan, we have some late 60, early 70 models still in use.
Still in use, okay.
We have from that to basically multiple models over years ago. The low shock, we moved more of the models to Glen Arden. The shock and the rise, we're getting them up there again, it's all about the median clock.
Did you price currently, the current cost of new?
We did, and it's like Mr. Fairley said, a new modular is very cheap, but getting it here, most of the building in Georgia, and getting it set up, it's a cost, we need all the local median codes, the, getting it set up with technology, it's expensive.
But these aren't planned to be used on this campus? They're going to be moved to some other side? Is that correct?
So there were two sets of modulators, some gang together. One set went to Glen Arden to help with our K3, and this other set of modulators, two classrooms, basically moved on site. We had to get them out of the way, because that's right where our addition is.
Understood, yes, sir.
It's the only spot we could really do this addition. And the school needs this modular.
They do need...
Yes.
Community high school, even with the, with the new conditions and the improvements, they will still need those two modulars.
Yeah, they have some special programs there, and they needed kind of a remote location, maybe outside the walls of the school, that works best for, for the programs that they have there, for a couple of the programs.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Bryant?
I don't have, if I could just add a thought, I would urge this board, Mr. Fairley, Dr. Baldwin, we, we as a board, previous boards, I think we, we're a long time remiss in updating this facility and doing what we need to do, and I, we get one chance to do it, and to do it right. I, I would just encourage any thought outside the box, anything that changes, to please bring it back to us for consideration, if there's a way we can do, and it may not be everything, it may be part of what's not being able to be done, but to keep us informed with that and in the loop. I know you would anyway, but I just, I, it's, it's a, it's a different dynamic and a different environment at the school, and, and I think sometimes if we can do a little bit more, we may do more good than we can never put a dollar figure on for those kids next year and five years from now, 20 years from now, than, if we don't do it from the front end, it just gets harder to do going down the road. And that's just, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board? I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Chair, I move we approve this GMP.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We will now, and I will now entertain a motion to approve the Advisory Council members for 17, 2017, 2018. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Did you get that? Ms. Matthews? Thank you. We'll now go to the consent agenda, on the items of consent agenda, the minutes of August 13, 2017, open session, the personnel report with an addendum, Advisory Council request to add a member, Advisory Council members change, approval of Career Technical Education Advisory Council, and the North Buckham Middle School Use of Capital Outlay allotment. Any, I would entertain a motion, let's see. And then also on the consent agenda are the policies for second reading, the Policy 9120, Policy 4701, Policy 4130, and Policy 6341. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Our future meetings, we have Teacher of the Year banquet on September 27. The NCSBA District 8 meeting will be held September 28 in Nesbit Academy. The Board of Education's regular meeting is October 5 at 6:30 here in the Minitorium. And the Buckham County Schools District-wide Advisory Council meeting will be held October 24 at 6 at Inca High School. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And could I get a second?
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh-huh. I'd like to report that for Thursday Night Lights, the score is not in North Buckham's favor. Last report I had was 14-7.
That's good.
Thank you guys for coming, the show's over. What about Wesley's? Wesley, Leanne's question, and then Wesley's question that sent it to you, and I said, "I have no idea." Well, I posted it to you in the wrong order. I first thought it was a question, and then I was like, "Oh, that's Wesley's, that's Wesley's."